Recording in progress.
All right, everyone, we're gonna get started. Welcome to the June 16, 2025, School Committee meeting pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2025. This meeting of the School Committee will be conducted via hybrid participation. We will post an audio recording, audio/video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of these proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the City of Somerville website and local cable access government channels. So let's start off with a moment of silence and salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Superintendent Carmona, you wanna call the roll?
Yes, through the chair. Ms. Peton?
Here.
Dr. Ackman? Mr. Green?
Here.
Mr. Peton?
Here.
President Paneda Newfield?
I'm here.
Mayor Valentine? Ms. Barish?
Here.
Dr. Phillips?
Here.
Chair Krypton? We have quorum.
Awesome. We're gonna take things a little out of order tonight. Dr. Carmona and I had the great pleasure of attending the 8th grade civic action projects at Argenziano on last Wednesday, I think, and it was really exciting, and we wanted to invite them here today, in part because some of their projects affect City Council, and we have President Paneda Newfeld with us tonight. So I'll turn over to Dr. Carmona to introduce them, and then invite our students up to the podium to give their presentation.
Thank you, Chair. I am honored to kick off tonight's meeting by introducing the Argenziano 8th grade class to present their civic action project. I was there with Dr. Phillips to witness the amazing celebration, the amazing exchange of ideas, and it was really breathtaking to know that we have students who can be eloquent, that can talk about complex ideas in a manner that were simple and well-articulated. It's a pleasure. In our strategic plan, our primary mission is clear: to cultivate inspired learners who are equipped to make positive impact on the world. This presentation is an amazing, and these amazing learners bring our mission to life. And thank you to Nancy Beiki for your leadership and to teach each and every student your curiosity and engagement. So Nancy, this is the turn in which you introduce your students, and we're here to listen.
Portuguese?
Hi, here's Telma Leitão, I will be your Portuguese interpreter for tonight.
I'll see you, there you go.
Olá, eu sou a Telma Leitão, seria seu intérprete de português essa noite.
Thank you. Spanish? Haitian Creole?
Good evening, my name is Andrew Supri, I'll be your Haitian Creole interpreter for tonight. Bonsoir à tout le monde, moi c'est Andrew Supri, moi c'est l'intérprete Creole haitien pour avoir soin. S'il vous est un Creole haitien, gardez en bas écran, web garder en globe, cliquez sur les phrases françaises pour créer la haitienne, merci.
Thank you. Thank you, Member Peton, for the reminder. Ms. Beiki, it's all you.
Thank you so much. It's really a pleasure and a privilege to be here. I enjoyed having my students present their projects to Dr. Carmona and Dr. Phillips last week, and we are delighted to be invited here to present to you this evening. And I'd like to just turn it over to the kids, because they did all the work here. So if you guys wanna come up and join me. We have Luca Buzan, Oliver Gary, Sambav Pokrel, Cooper Simon, and Mayank Manandhar. Take it away.
Good afternoon, student hall. We are the 8th grade Argenziano school. We are coming here today to present the Lincoln Park Field with turf.
The Lincoln Park grass field has many disadvantages, and many of them directly affect the safety of our students. There are dangerous holes in the dirt, and it gets slippery when it rains, and it's closed for much of the year for maintenance.
In contrast to the grass, our idea of wooden pellet turf provides many benefits to our city and students. Turf rarely has to be maintained and can be used year-round. It also won't reveal any inconsistencies in the appearance or hazardous defects.
These are our overall project goals. We aim to replace the Lincoln Park field with eco-friendly turf, ensuring that it will provide benefits for the Somerville residents and have positive impact on the environment.
Wood pellet turf is an eco-friendly alternative to black rubber pellet turf. It is completely safe for animals and it is non-toxic. Many sources of wood pellet turf are also made from renewable wood sources, so there should be no environmental concerns.
There are some concerns that you may have about the installation of turf on Lincoln Park Field, but we will try to relieve them. Some may think that the cost of installation is too high to be worth it, but the very low cost of maintenance will help offset this initial cost over time. Another common belief is that turf becomes excessively hot in the summer, but the wooden pellet turf fixes this by dispersing the heat better than the black pellets. Another argument we have heard is that turf is bad for the environment, but many sources for wood pellet turf are eco-friendly.
These are the responses we have from the students at our school. As you can see, 71.3% of the students surveyed voted yes, changing the field to turf would benefit their sport. 75% of the students said they've been hurt during recess during the past year. 64.8% of people would use it more often. This is very convenient for them, because they don't have to travel to other schools. Their residents also wouldn't have to worry about traveling far to use a usable field. Finally, the majority of the students surveyed that they would like to switch the grass field to turf. This shows that switching the grass field to turf benefits the students and residents living nearby.
The majority of our school students have reported being injured on the field, so we also believe it is time to take action. Our goal is to implement our process with the assistance of members of Student Council.
These are our goals, targets, and tactics. Our main goal is to convert the Lincoln Park field to turf. To achieve this, we need to talk to some specific people. Our targets are MSOTO, the Department of Public Works, and the School Board. Our strategy is to speak with Ms. Phillips to persuade her to help us advocate for a turf field.
Throughout the course of the project, we have learned that students in our school would prefer turf grass to the grass one. We made a slideshow to display what we learned about the students here at our school and benefits of turf.
Thank you for coming today. We are ready to address any questions or concerns you might have.
President Paneda Newfeld?
Thank you, Dr. Phillips. First, thank you for your presentation. I wish every presentation I sat through was as clear and succinct and quick as that one, so thank you. I appreciate what you laid out here. I do have some follow-up questions. Do you know at all, have you done any research on what is the cost or the average cost for putting this in?
It's around $150,000, but we also found the calculations of...
Is that for installation?
Yeah, that's for installation, putting the wood turf down, but over time, it only...
You really only have to pay for the paint, to spray the lines on the field. But for grass, you have to maintain it year-round, the grass, everything.
You also have to, like we said in our presentation, you have to close it, you have to close it half of the year because of...
Like it's not well-kept.
Great. I do have some more questions. Are there other schools either in Somerville or nearby that utilize wood pellet turf?
Recently, some places have been switching, like Conway, I feel like...
Capoano?
Yeah, Capoano has switched.
Every school has turf.
Every school? I guess every school has wood pellet turf.
Every school that has a field has turf.
Yeah, like a turf field.
Every school in Somerville that has turf has wood pellet turf? Has a field, has a wood pellet turf?
Yeah.
I see, okay. And the survey that you asked, was that of the whole school? How many people did that survey?
Oh, right. This was 6th to 8th grade. So these were students 6th to 8th grade, yeah, from just our school, right? Yeah. Like, we took some surveys from other schools, but mostly our school.
Do you know the participation rate of the students? Like, how many actually responded to your survey?
I think all of them in our school, and then I don't know about the other schools. We could check, but, yeah.
Sorry, I have a couple more questions about the survey. There was a question about if you've gotten hurt during recess. Is that because they're getting hurt on the grass field? Tell me more about that question.
Yeah, there was an open-ended response on how you got hurt, and most of them were about getting hurt on the field by a pothole, or, I mean, there were...
Twisting your ankle?
Yeah, like twisting your ankle on a pothole or something in the field.
Gotcha, okay. Okay. I'll let others ask questions. This is really helpful. Thank you.
Ms. Barish, did you still have a question?
Thank you, through you. Thanks for the presentation and the data and everything. It's awesome. I just wanted to clarify, you're talking about the field that is sometimes used for soccer, that's sort of just adjacent to the smaller playground? You're not talking about the softball field? Right, you're talking about...
No, yeah, we're talking about the soccer field.
The soccer field, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Peton?
Thank you, Chair, through you. Awesome presentation, guys. Really excited also just to learn about something that I had never heard of this as an issue in our city, so thanks for bringing it to us and bringing light to it. I'm curious about the counterpoint, right? Some of your charts showed that, I mean, clearly, the overwhelming percentage of people preferred the turf field, but there was about a quarter of each of those pie charts where people preferred grass fields. So I'm wondering, what are you hearing from those people who prefer grass fields? Because I have heard very passionate arguments for grass, so I'm just wondering if you heard that and how you incorporated that.
Yeah, a lot of the people that, especially in our school, they've said, they've often said environmental stuff, like global warming, the chemicals that come from the astroturf, but we already attack that, and we're using wood pellet turf, so it's eco-friendly. And a lot of people say heat, like we said, wood pellet turf also regulates the heat better, and also, yeah.
Also, it wasn't, there was like three choices. There was yes, maybe, or no, and on, I think, all the surveys, there were four. There were more maybes than no's, so people were just unsure about what to do. I think Luca was right, it's mostly about environmental stuff, but they just voted maybe, just because they didn't know.
Dr. Carmona?
Thank you for the presentation, and I will agree with our City Councilor President that it was brief and concise. I noticed that when I was there last week, there was also another group that was advocating for grass, and they were also claiming that they understood what you were asking for, and they also were asking for an option, and there was some consensus around the two concerns, which is there are some potholes in the field, that was my understanding, and so they agree with you on the issue of the holes, but they disagree in terms of the solution. One thing I was wondering about is, I know students have gotten hurt out there, so there's this question about causality and correlation, like, did the kids get hurt because of the grass or because of the holes in the space? And is it an issue of replacing the grass or is it an issue of fixing the holes?
I think it's because of the holes. I don't think it's because of the grass at all. Yeah, like, I feel like, I mean, I don't think the grass really affects it, it's just the holes. If we replaced the holes, then I guess, like, most people like turf, because it's just consistent, like, year-round, you don't really have to worry about that type of stuff with turf, so that's what we thought.
Thank you.
Mr. Green?
I want to third, first of all, I want to third the thanks and compliment for the clarity of the proposal. I have, I do not think I recognize when I took this job how much time I'd spent listening to people talk to me about turf versus grass, and of those presentations, yours is probably the clearest one I've ever heard, so I want to thank you for that.
No problem.
And to that point, I want to sort of build on the conversation that's currently being had, because I'll admit that my question's always been, because the reason it's coming up is because historically, we don't do a good job of maintaining grass fields in this city, and the question I have never gotten an answer to is, what makes people think we could? So my question for you is, did you all think about, to Dr. Carmona's point, the, could we just fix the grass issue, and if you did, why did you eventually decide that wasn't the right solution?
Wait, what?
Did you think about just fixing the grass as a solution? And if you did, why did you decide that turf was a better solution than just fixing the grass?
I think because we chose turf, it's better, because over time, like we said, you don't have to take care of it, and the potholes appeared in the grass, and they're just gonna keep coming up, and we're gonna keep have to fixing them over and over, and I feel like over time, it will start to build up a cost, but with turf, it's just a high installation cost, so over time, I feel like it's a better, like, cost-worthy.
Thank you.
I also have, sorry, I also have another one. A lot of these holes are made because of dogs. I didn't point that out. Dogs can't dig through turf, so even if we, if they keep doing it, we do signs. I've seen multiple people ignore those signs. I see people, I see dogs on the baseball field, I see dogs on just the regular soccer field. If we keep doing these signs, we would have to maybe have, but I don't think we should hire a security person to watch the field, that would be kind of silly, but if these dogs keep doing that, they would just keep digging these holes.
Ms. Peton?
Through you, thank you. I was gonna not repeat myself on the compliments, but I'm gonna compliment again, because nobody gets tired of hearing what a good job you did and having this be so focused and have this advocacy point of view. I'm curious, I think at other fields, they've had to put up fencing to keep dogs out, so that's another cost to consider, and then I think the other piece is how the neighborhood will respond. I'm not saying that's your responsibility, but I think that's the factor that will be part of the decision-making and the consideration, because obviously, the people who are budding that property, for history, and you probably know this, there was a ton of advocacy that went on when this field got put in, and there was a huge push to put the grass in. Particularly, there was also the soccer community that we really wanted to have the turf field because of the limitations of being able to use it. So anyway, I think that, I just wanted to frame that a little bit, and you maybe already knew this, but to know that having your advocacy is really powerful, and these other perspectives have to be factored in, but I'm really glad that you came in front of us, and as a parent who had kids who did soccer that would have to do practice at, like, that would end at 9:00 and 9:30 at night, because we didn't have enough fields, I can see the advantages of having a more sustainable field, so thank you.
Yeah, to get to your point on the neighborhood, we kind of researched that, and reasons why the community didn't want, they wanted grass, is because the turf that the people were proposing, it was not eco-friendly, and so that's why we've came with the wood pellet turf, which is eco-friendly, so, yeah.
I'm gonna call on myself. Oh, go ahead, Luca.
Sorry, I also want to come back to you on your, why don't we just handle the grass nicer? Even if that did happen, we would have to close it still in winter times, because you couldn't use that, but if we had turf, we could use it throughout the whole seasons. So that's, I'm sorry.
Thanks for that great addition. I have a question actually for President Paneda Newfeld. These folks have come and done a great presentation and hopefully gotten a lot of us on their side. What advice do you have for them about how to get this proposal done?
Great question, thank you. I would recommend having a conversation with the Ward Counselor, which I believe this is Ward 2, so that's Counselor JT Scott, about your ideas and to see, you know, if he's willing to shepherd this through, or at least have a start of conversation with the city about what this would take. I think the other person on that list you're right about is DPW, but I would start with the Ward Counselor for the Ward to see, you know, given the feedback from when the park was redesigned, this new idea around wood pellet turf versus the turf that they were proposing at the time, you know, just sort of see if there's some appetite there for continuing this conversation. And I'm happy to make that connection, I'm also happy to have a conversation to queue that up for you all, so that it's an easier conversation to have with him.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming tonight. It's great to see you, very, very proud of you. Have a great summer.
Thank you so much. Thanks for loving us.
All right, I think we have some minutes to approve. Thank you. I move to approve the minutes from June 9. There's a motion by Eleanor Barish, seconded by Lee Ram Peton, to approve the minutes of June 9. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Garcia, do we have anyone signed up for public comment? Okay. That brings us to the report of the superintendent.
Thank you, through the chair. Those students were incredible, and I know that Nancy has left, but thank you Nancy out there for the effort and for making learning visible. What an amazing start of our final meeting before our summer recess begins. Let's switch gears. In your pocket, you will find an end-of-year memo, which reflects on this past year and celebrates what makes our learning community so special. So this year, we welcome nearly 300 children into preschool and over 1,000 new students across all grades. Our commitment to quality instruction was reflected in the rollout of evidence-based curriculum for grades 3 through 8. Our staff showed their dedication through more than 60 concerts and theater productions. Our school library has flourished, lending out over 65,000 books, and our cafeterias serve over 1 million free meals and snacks. Our Conditions for Learning Survey shows overall improvement in students' ability to self-regulate, and our iReady data shows steady growth in reading and math. We also reached an important milestone with the official launch of our strategic plan, now paired with a data dashboard that allows us to track our progress in real time. I extend my deepest gratitude to every paraprofessional, teacher, principal, counselor, administrator, and staff member, whose passion and dedication make all of this possible. To our students and families, thank you for being the heart of Somerville Public Schools. Your resilience and spirit inspire us every single day. Thank you. I also have a very important update regarding negotiations with the Somerville Educators Union. I am glad to share that we have reached a tentative agreement with Unis A, C, and E, which include our teachers, counselors, paraprofessionals, and families. This was for sure a collaborative effort on the part of the District and Educators Union to prioritize our students and value our educators. I am deeply appreciative of our educators, staff, the school committee members, and the mayor for unifying around what is best for our students and families. Special thanks to the entire negotiating team, as well as SEU President DeShawn Simmons and SPS Chief Personal Officer Karen Woods for their dynamic leadership throughout this process. Thank you. This was quite a milestone, so if you were not part of the process, I can tell you, Andrea Green was there, as well as Eleanor. This was quite an experience, but I know that we both brought the best that we had to arrive to what we finally have. So, Mr. Simmons, thank you very much for the efforts and meeting us all the way through the process. Finally, I want to provide an update on the MSBA building projects for the Winter Hill community and potentially for the Brown School. The city has officially selected the owner's project manager, who is responsible for overseeing the project. The city selected PMA consultants, that's the same firm, the same OPM for the high school. Next up, the city is in the process of selecting the designer/architect. Advertization for the designer is going out today, and the RFQ should be ready by next week. So the first school building committee meeting has been scheduled for July 7. The SBC is responsible for meeting around the technical aspects of the building. In the last two weeks, we partnered with the city in hosting a coffee hour at the Winter Hill and one at the Brown. Most of you have been present for those meetings, so thank you for joining me on those. This was an opportunity for families to ask the mayor and city department leaders any questions they had about the process. To close, I'll share a high-level timeline. The city's community engagement survey and focus groups are scheduled for late summer and early fall. The depth exclusion ballot question is expected in November 2027, and the completion of construction is anticipated in late 2031. With that, thank you for the opportunity to serve you as your superintendent and for partnering with me for another year to make our schools a place where students can thrive. Thank you. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Seeing no questions or comments, we can move on to the report of the subcommittees. I move to accept the report of the School Building Facilities and Maintenance Meeting, June 10, 2025. There's a motion by Eleanor Barish, seconded by Emily Ackman, to accept the report of the School Committee meeting for the School Building Facilities and Maintenance Meeting on June 10, 2025. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I'm gonna lay that first item of new business on the table till later and move on to the UAW Scale Program Administrator MOA.
I move to authorize the Chair to sign the UAW Scale Program Administrator MOA.
The motion by Eleanor Barish, seconded by Emily Ackman, to approve the UAW Scale Program Administrator MOA. Any questions or discussion? So this is a vote in public of a vote we took in executive session. This is the, this is a one-year rollover, is that right, of that contract? And with that, there's a motion by Eleanor Barish, seconded by Emily Ackman, to approve the UAW Scale Program Administrator MOA. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, we have come to the part of our last meeting of the year where we take a whole lot of motions to keep... lot of motions to keep the district running while we are not. Who's up for the first one?
You want the motion? Is that what you said? Okay. I, I move to, sorry, let's see, participate in the National School Lunch and Breakfast Program and the Commodity Food Distribution Program in conformity with requirements of the State Bureau of Nutrition and Education and School Food Services for the 25, sorry, 2025, 2026 school year, as in previous years.
Second.
There's a motion by Eleanor Behrish, seconded by Emily Ackman, to continue participating in the National School Lunch and Breakfast Program. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Accident insurance.
I move to continue, renew the contract for student accident insurance for the 2025, 2026 school year with Moran, oh, sorry. I moved to receive and place on file, there we go, the new contract for student accident insurance for the 2025, 2026 school year that has been renewed with Moran Insurance Agency, 23 Spruce Street, Suite B, Malden, Massachusetts, 02148, lower the rates, which are the same as last year. Student insurance plan, Gold Premium, school time, 750, 0020. Premium, 24-hour coverage, $49. Dental, extended, $10. Plan B, all sports, Rockwall shop and lab coverage. Premium, Gold Plan, $6,419. Catastrophic cash benefit, $1,039.
Second.
There's a motion by Eleanor Behrish, seconded by Emily Ackman. Yes.
Does the Rockwall get used? I thought it wasn't in use.
Through the chair, as far as I know, it's not being active. So I think there's more than that. There's not only the insurance, but there's the certification that we need to have by a third party to basically certify that the Rockwall, I think it's on a yearly basis, is in condition to be used.
So, may I ask a follow-up? Through the chair, so I'm happy that we're, you know, I just, again, like in the spirit of using our dollars efficiently, if, for whatever reason, especially because my understanding is you can come back and ask for it, the Rockwall is not in use, like, do we know, because I assume that is a substantial amount of insurance or a portion of insurance, like, do we know what it would be differently if that was taken out?
Through the chair, a good question. We did not, we talked about the nature of the insurance today in our discussions with the finance team, but we didn't actually ask that question. Good question. We will have to come back to the table to look at what is the impact of removing that out of the package.
Okay. Thank you. I mean, I'm happy to approve as it is, but I hope we do follow up with that.
Ms. Behrish. I guess a follow-up to Dr. Ackman's question or request. I wonder if it's something that you have to ensure whether you use it or not because of the risk, like a swimming pool, like, there is a risk inherent in having it, but is there a different rate in having it versus having phys ed classes or a club that uses it regularly? If there is a difference in the rate, it'd be great if we could explore that.
I don't have the answer to that, but yes.
Mr. Green.
Just to remind people, this is not a vote on paying the bill. We just received the bill and the district handles this business as it sees fit, including hopefully asking if there's a way we can cut the bill down in any ways reform without cutting, exposing our social liability.
And with that, we have a motion by Emily Ackman, seconded, no, sorry, by Eleanor Behrish, seconded by Emily Ackman, to receive and place on file our paid student accident insurance. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to authorization for the summer months.
I move to authorize the superintendent to act on the school committee's behalf to: A, pay bills on school department accounts for which commitments have been made by bid or purchase order before the close of schools. Said bills to be ratified by the committee at the first meeting in, it says September, possibly August. B, expend from the FY 2026 salaries account funds for payment of salaries of personnel under all federal grants beginning in September. Should that also say August, or are we okay with September? I'm going to go with September. Expend the FY 26 salaries account funds for payment of salaries and personnel as detailed in the FY 25 budget. Use salaries account and school operations account funds to pay encumbrances and salaries for summer programs. Authorize and/or reauthorize school department revolving accounts to accept all monies received by the school committee in connection with the conduct of said revolving accounts according to the purposes of the program or programs from which receipts in each account were derived, and accept all state and federal grant monies awarded through the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, the Department of Early Education and Care, and to authorize the establishment of separate grant accounts that may be expended by the school committee without further appropriation for the purposes designated in each grant proposal.
Second.
The motion by Emily Ackman, seconded by Lee Rampe Ton. Is there any discussion? This motion is to authorize payment during the summer months. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the acceptance of FY 25 grant funds.
I move to accept all federal entitlements and continuation grants and all state continuation grants awarded to the Somerville Public Schools as listed as follows. Private BU Consortium, $2,000 for SFLC home visiting for pre-K and K. State Mass Hire North Workforce, $76,200 to scale Department Pacman Construction Training Program. And Mass Hire North Workforce, $52,000 for scale Department Pacman Construction Training Program.
There's a motion by Lee Rampe Ton, seconded by Emily Ackman, to accept the FY 25 grant funds. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We have a donation to approve.
I move to accept with gratitude the following donations. Anonymous donation of $10,000 from Belmont, Massachusetts for the SHS Scholarship Fund.
Second.
There's a motion by Mr. Green, seconded by Dr. Ackman, to accept this generous donation. Discussion question, Mr. Green?
Yeah, just procedurally, it occurs to me that like, I totally understand why someone would want to donate money to us anonymously, and I appreciate that. How do we ensure as the body, because part of the reason we approve these things is to establish a no conflict, how do we do that due diligence with an anonymous donation? And I don't need the answer right now, but I think as a systematic thing, how do we know in the case of an anonymous donation that it's not being untoward in any ways that we would?
Is this something we can bring up with our new chief financial officer?
Yeah.
Great. We will do that and get back to the body. Any further discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Did we have our MSBA update? Is there more?
What? Yeah, I read the update. That was part of the report.
Great. Awesome. Okay, going back to new business, Dr. Ackman, is there anything you wanted to say about the things going around the horseshoe right now?
Uh, yes. I tried to get here as quickly I can. I was at the Healy Moving On Ceremony, brought a tear to my eye, they all do. But, so, thank you for the grace of my colleagues to allow me to be a little bit late. We have thank you cards that we are sharing to Ruben, to Jess, and we hope that you'll pass the ones to Karen and Pat, to Erica, and pass the one to Amara. You know, we thought about getting you a gift, but we hope that, like, our sincere notes of thanks for the amazing work that you do will, you know, you'll know our appreciation. We also have one for Judy to thank you for all that you've done on behalf of council for us. My understanding is there is a something, I'm going to kick that over to the chair, but yes.
Yeah, as we say goodbye to another lovely city council president, we're going to send you out the way a school committee sends people out. We have a resolution, and then we're going to shower you with love. So, Mr. Beton, you want to come up and read that resolution?
That's what I thought. And he said, "Come up," and I froze my tracks. This is my absolute honor to present. I will read it aloud and to the extent I can get through the tears that are already welling inside of me. Resolution honoring City Council President Judy Pineda Newfeld. Whereas Counselor Judy Pineda Newfeld was elected by the city council as its president on January 6, 2025, and served in that capacity as a member of the school committee from that date until June 2025. Whereas President Judy, President Pineda Newfeld served honorably and notably engaged in school committee deliberations, both in public session and executive session, providing valuable input on matters related to budget, collective bargaining, and navigating the tumultuous time of the 2025 federal presidential transition. Whereas President Pineda Newfeld provided critical insights into the machinations and workings of city council to the extent they pertain to school committee and Somerville Public Schools. Whereas President Pineda Newfeld used her position to better establish connections between the separate elected bodies of the city council and the school committee for the collective benefits of all Somerville residents. And whereas the Somerville School Committee and the Somerville Public School community benefited greatly from President Pineda Newfeld's leadership, partnership, and commitment to service in Somerville, particularly during her tenure as president. Therefore, be it resolved that the Somerville School Committee emphatically expresses its heartfelt gratitude for President Pineda Newfeld's contributions to Somerville Public Schools, including to its administration, educators, students, and families, and for her leadership guiding the Somerville Public Schools. And be it further resolved that this resolution be recorded in the minutes of tonight's meeting and that a framed copy be presented to City Council President Judy Pineda Newfeld.
We do, we do have to vote on it, don't we? We never vote on these things? I lied, we never vote on these things.
All right, good to know. Andre, though, has something he wants to say. So, I think it's, so every person who takes, who has the job of being the council president and therefore an executive member of the school committee handles the job slightly differently. Some of that is temperament, some of that is the nature of what's going on at the time. And you are the fourth, fifth, fifth person in that seat I've had the pleasure of working with. And I will say that of those five, I think you had a particular focus that was greatly appreciated and greatly needed on actually making sure that all of these disparate parts of this complicated thing we call Somerville government, which works far more on like handshakes and unofficial, unofficial norms than I think most people want to realize, that actually worked in the common purpose for the students of Somerville, and that is greatly appreciated, made, among other things, made negotiations in the budget process go smoother than they otherwise would have. And, you know, I think, I often say to people, the, often times the measure of a good school committee member is what doesn't happen because of them. And in a year where we had the opportunity to have so many landmines blow up in our faces, the fact that they didn't, you had more to do with that than I think most people will ever know. So I want to thank you, and you'll be missed.
Thank you. Ditto that you will be sorely missed. Your leadership, your diplomacy is just impressive and has been a joy to watch, to learn from. And your engagement with us, your thoughtful engagement, you know, as, you know, a city counselor and a, you know, soon-to-be SPS parent, we'll say, is just been nothing short of inspirational, and I thank you for that deeply, and you really look forward to like watching your trajectory and celebrating it.
Ms. Beton.
Thank you through you to President Judy Pineda Newfeld. I just wanted to note a couple of things that I so much appreciated about your leadership. I think that you always bring an action orientation, and you're very clear about what some next steps are, how to move forward. And I think in the milieu of an opinion and emotion, it's often hard to be brass tacks, and I really appreciate that about your leadership. I also believe that you bring such a sincere curiosity to the work that you do, and you come at your questions and your concern from that, from that heart. And I really value that, and I really feel like it inspires me to be better and making sure that I'm bringing things from a point of curiosity and not necessarily a point of criticism or always applause. It's, you know, why are we doing this and how can we do things differently? And I also think that you are incredibly thoughtful about trying to factor in all these different points of view, and then being really clear and justified about what you land on moving forward, even if it doesn't make everyone happy, which sometimes that's really hard to do, but you know that that's in the best interest of the situation in the city. So anyway, I think that your voice and your heart will continue to influence us in Somerville, and I just thank you for your leadership, and I've learned a lot from you. So, thank you.
Eleanor.
It's hard to say something new after all my colleagues' glowing reflections. I, you know, I appreciate your compassion and thoughtfulness, but also sort of no-nonsenseness. And I think sincerity is really what it comes down to, that, you know, you're here to serve and you're here to make progress. And I just look forward to seeing how you continue to make an impact in the future because I know you're not done.
So I met Judy like, I don't know, 20 years ago, like, my first job in Massachusetts, and Judy had just graduated from college, and she was already a rock star. She had already gotten someone elected to the state legislature, and she was like, what, like, 21 years old. So she went on and became a trainer for the Democratic Party. She ran Emerged Massachusetts, and I remember that she was kind enough to have coffee with me when I wanted to run for school committee, and she told me that she had always wanted to run for Ward Three's city council seat, and that that was her seat, and how much of a bummer it was that she didn't live in Ward Three anymore. And then, six years later, four years later, she ran for the Ward Seven seat and won. And we are so lucky to have you in city government here in Somerville. As a, as a, I guess, as a constituent, I care most about electeds who get things done. I don't like people who just talk, and Judy doesn't talk all that much, but she gets an awful lot done. And we are so grateful to have you here. It's been a real pleasure to get to work with you again, and I hope I get to do it another time still in this lifetime.
Can I say something too?
Absolutely.
I, I, thank you. I'm overwhelmed, and this is really meaningful. And I just want to say that, you all know I'm a, I'm a mom to a two-year-old, and I get to talk to a lot of parents in my mama hat of Somerville students. And, you know, they don't all know, you know, I don't, I don't like wear a shirt that says I'm the city council and I'm on the school committee. So some of them don't know my connection to city government, and I get to hear, like, real thoughts about the Somerville schools from parents at the playground, you know, daycare pickup, folks that have older kids. daycare pickup, folks that have older kids, and I hear such, like, glowing love for the city and its schools, and the, and for friends that have older kids that have graduated from high school or that are moving into high school, talk about the, not just the teachers and educators, but the learning environment, the love that they experience in our schools, and how unique it is, and how, you know, when they, when they compare, you know, because we do this as parents, their kids with their friends' kids, right, who go to other schools, I will not name any municipalities here, but they say, like, the richness of the education is so unique in Somerville, and I can't wait to put my kid through the public schools here. Like, I, some of you know I'm looking for a bigger apartment because I have a growing toddler, and like, in no way am I leaving the city because I want my child to be educated in Somerville Public Schools. It's so important to us as a family, and I just can't wait for him to experience what I know is true from parents, but also what I know is true from sitting in this room and sitting around this horseshoe and getting to hear from principals and students and, like, the civic action project today. It's so inspiring that our students are getting to know city government and what it takes to advocate for something they care about. I just, I love that. So, you know, and some of you know we've had youth come in front of the council very recently because of Founder's Rank, and they're just so courageous to stand in front of this room and advocate for what they care about, and that's because they go to the schools here. You know, like, they're learning a level of education that I am so excited for Isaac to learn. So I just want to thank you all because that couldn't be possible without the hard work of all of you in this room and the truly the loving care you put into the schools and the school system and the district. And it's, it's just, I'm going to miss sitting around here, but I'm going to listen in from home, and I will be an annoying constituent, don't worry. I'll come to public hearings and ask you questions and pay attention to the budget, but I, I'm really proud of the work that I got to do here for the short time I was here, and, and thank you all for everything that you do. So I really appreciate all the nice words.
We're going to miss you. And that brings us to items from committee members. Ms. Betone?
Thank you through the chair. I just wanted to compliment the district. I had the opportunity to attend the staff recognition ceremony, and it was an incredibly, I just want to share this with my colleagues, it was, it was so joyful that they passed out pom-poms and noisemakers when you walked in the room. I took zero pictures because I was too busy being like, yay! And it included, you know, recognition for years of service, so people five, 10, 15, 20, 25, 30, I don't know how, it went high, and as well as awards that were nominated by peers. So I, it's almost like I'm getting a little glow of satisfaction, even though I had nothing to do with it other than just being a cheerleader, but I just want to thank the district for enacting that, and I hope that you got good feedback from the staff and if you want to make a few comments about it. It was just really lovely, and it is in your email. You guys can see the presentation about who got the awards in the email.
I totally agree with you, Laura, and I just want to say something in regards to what I heard a minute ago. Two things. One is, thank you for acknowledging the hard work of the team. I think that, for me, I'm very fortunate that I am in a place where, you know, this is a district that really values community, and I have an impressive team, and I think that, to me, that's a gift. And when I hear the comments around the benefits of being in a community that cares, cares about belonging, cares about academics, that is what makes a difference. And again, the work that happens, happens because of the folks who are working together and holding hands. The idea of teacher celebration was part of the strategic plan, and it was a couple of individuals that ran on that goal and built that with a collective. And so all those things happened from the idea place, but it only happens through the hands of those folks that are in the community, working hand-in-hand with teachers and working with administration. So I just want to thank the teachers, I want to thank our, my team, you know, Jess is here. Every single time we come here, Erica is always helping us, but it's these ideas that really help us become a team, and I cannot imagine any of this being possible without their support. So thank you for the recognition, and I do think that it really is exciting to see that our team is being recognized for that, and it does a gift to us, so thank you.
Dr. Ackman?
Thank you through the chair. I just, I would like to, I did review the slides from the staff appreciation and, like, the, you know, what was happening 15 years ago, 20 years ago, definitely made me giggle and feel old simultaneously. But that is something that I offhandedly had mentioned to previous administrations more than once, and like, the idea of that was met with various roadblocks, and so I never mentioned it to you, and not that I, but like, the way you did it and, like, you know, speaks to who you are, your value in community, and like, the way it was executed, and like, I'm so happy that we're doing it and that, you know, it was done in a communal way. So, you know, not, not just that you did it, but that, like, there have been opportunities to do it before, like, it has been put on the table and it never got carried through, so I'm, you know, excited to have it continue, and that it was as wonderful as the slides led me to believe it would have been.
It is floating confetti, and there were, like, cheer teams, and it was just a really, it's, in addition to all the other events we're doing that are celebrating students, which I know all of us have had an opportunity to go to different moving up ceremonies or graduation or class day, it was really nice to be just as a fly on the wall, although a screamer with my pom-poms for something that was celebrating staff, so, thank you.
I have a goofy item from committee members that I hope you all indulge me about. Two weeks ago, when we were here to watch the mayor present the budget, Ms. Bearish and Mr. Green and I all learned that behind this curtain is a balcony, and so I'm going to request, since it's my last, last of the year, school committee meetings, that we all go out there after the meeting and take a picture and, and be happy together, so, thank you.
Stable enough to hold all of them?
It's, it's the fire escape, so it's stable. It's stable. And with that, the school committee would like to extend its deepest condolences to the family of Alia Josephine Jojo Ante Tomaso Baso, former paraprofessional at the Edgerly School, and Teresa Terry Maderos, parent of Brianna Grandoyte, speech-language pathologist at the East Somerville Community School, and to the family of Florence Elizabeth Wilton McGuire, mother of Catherine E. McGuire, school counselor at the Somerville High School, or Som, I think it may, at the Somerville Hill School at the Broadway Community. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.